Good afternoon. Let me start tonight with prayer and pledge. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Sylvia to lead us in prayer if she would not mind, and Councilman Flores to lead us in the pledge, please.
All that you would like to participate, please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Father God. Father God, we asking that you would bless each and every one of us. Lord, we asking that you would take a special look at our city council, lead us, guide us, direct us in the correct things that we do for the city. Lord, and we thank you, and we give your name the praise. All the honor and glory is yours, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Mayor Proton Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present.
You have all nine members present.
Thank you. This is a public meeting of the city council. Audience, I ask that you refrain from speaking, interrupting, cheering, booing, and any obnoxious behavior. I'd also like to remind city council, all devices, telephones, please put silence along with your computers. Audience, I ask that you do the same thing. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, I don't have any announcements this evening, so that takes us right to public input.
Okay. We're at the public input. We remain courteous and polite at all times. You will be called to the podium by our clerk. You have three minutes that you'll be timed in which to make your statement on what you are talking about. I ask that you take the last few seconds to wrap it up. Councilmembers are allowed...oh, I'm sorry. That's it.
Our first speaker this evening is Catherine Goodman.
Is Ms. Goodman here?
We will move on to Patrice Bullware.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Manager, city manager, and young lady, our attorney, to everyone that's here. I am Patrice Bullware, and I am founder of Project Unify Incorporated. Project Unify is a nonprofit organization. We have been an active member of the Adopt a Park program in the city of Saginaw for 11 consecutive years. I am one person with a small committee. Our tireless efforts is evidence of the concerns and passions that we have for our youth. Many can bear witness to the continued improvements that we have made to better both parks, that would be Veterans McKinney and also Unity Parks here in the city of Saginaw. And our goal is to bring life back to our communities and neighborhoods that have been labeled as urban and inner-city areas. So I must say, by the grace of God, we have done just that. A huge transformation has taken place since our volunteer...our volunteerism has begun. It is not easy, and there's no pay. And with that being said, I would like to ask council if you would consider Project Unify when reallocating return ARPA funds. We have accomplished a lot within 11 years. However, there is so much more to be developed. And with your support, we can do more things to improve the quality of life at these great parks for the good of all those who use them. And then I must say for the record, I am not the police. I am a concerned resident of the city of Saginaw who understands the importance of community involvement. I have labored for 11 years to create a beautiful and safe place to visit. I don't write the city ordinance, so I'm asking that the police be more present and help us to regulate the things that...the activities, I want to say the activities that go on at the parks. And I would say after hours, and then to make sure that they enforcing that any activities that do take place that have large crowds, that they have their permits. I do believe in following rules and regulations, and they are in place to be followed. And so I want to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Cornetia Harvey.
All right. Our next speaker is Cornetia Harvey. I agree with that young lady, what she was just saying. I'd like to thank you, Brenda Moore, Madam Mayor, Brenda Moore, for helping me with my situation when I came to you guys for help. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. But I have some more concerns about the roads. I heard y'all got some money, the city got some money for the roads, and Wildsworth Street need to be done ASAP. It's just that bad. Never been done since 1971. And I know you keep records. When I call, they'll come and patch up. Uh-uh. That whole street need to be done, all the way down to the sidewalk, say, "Welcome to Saginaw." They did the other side where the road, where the train station is at, when they couldn't have just came straight on down, but they skipped it. 19th Street around that curve by the...why is the railroad...the streets by the railroads, by the trains? It's all messed up. By the train. Looked like...who's responsible for that? Years ago, it used to be the railroad was responsible for their area. Well, 19th Street by the train track in the 1,400 blocks around that curve, I slid all the way through. I couldn't even turn in the wintertime. I also want to talk about the tree. I called in to streets a couple of times about that tree. It's on the city property, and it's right behind 529 Athens, which is my address. A limb had damaged my fence, but I didn't complain about it, no problem. But it's keep...the limbs and everything keep coming down, falling into my side of the backyard, and I have to clean it up. And that's a lot of work for me right now. I heard you having to clean up. I'm sorry I can't participate, but my health don't help, you know, don't allow me right now. And Cathay Street, they don't do nothing. I got a new bicycle. I was just riding in Saginaw, and all the bumps was just messing up my tires on my bicycle. That's from the east side to the north side where I'm at. In front of that clinic, Wildsworth Street need to be done for real, though. Since 1971, nothing, just patching up. And that's over there where I live at. That tree need to be...I think that tree got a disease in it. It's been there since 1971, too, when we moved over there. So I just come for help with that, since the city got road service...I mean, not road service, but money. Well, is it already spent? It's probably already spent.
Ms. Harvey, we're not going to answer you, but somebody will get back with you. I guarantee you.
Okay.
Okay? Somebody will get with you to answer your concerns. Thank you. We got a new toy.
There we go. All right. Next, we have Crystal Sanders.
Is Ms. Sanders here?
All right. How about Vicki Hill?
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Moore.
Good evening.
I appreciate you listening to me today. I am here on behalf of women of colors. But first of all, I do want to just take a brief moment to say thank you to the city council who showed up at Gospel Fest. It was amazing. I appreciate your support more than I can tell you. It's been 22 years of me doing the same thing in this city, and I tell you what, this was amazing. So I appreciate your support. Hopefully, I'll have that support again in next year. But I want to talk about women of colors. I just want to encourage the councilmembers, if you would consider, go ahead and distributing the rest of the funds that Women of Colors was allocated through the ARPA funds, so that we can continue to do the work that we do in this community. We've been working in this community for 30 years now, and we have amazing programs, but those programs take dollars. And we can't get anywhere if we don't have the dollars, the funds, to completely fund the projects that we have going and that we continue to do. So that is my plea today, if you would go ahead and continue and consider distributing the rest of the funds that was allocated through the ARPA funds for women of color so that our projects can stay on track. We have to stay on track. We have so many going right now that we need those dollars to complete the things that we have going in our community. We support the community 110%, if not more. So that was my plea today. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
All right. How about Hurley Coleman III?
Good evening.
Good evening.
To our mayor, Mayor Proton, city council, city manager, to the entire community, those who are watching online, I just want to come with you, come to you with some brief updates. I submitted to you all a SWOT analysis that was done from some of our kids in our youth program. We ran an eight-week program this summer with the DNR in partnership. Grateful for the partners such as First Ward, who has been working with us with the DNR as well. They have their own program with their own set of children, and together, we were able to put a lot of children to work this summer. But in particular, I wanted to highlight these individuals, these young men and women who did a SWOT analysis, that's a strengths, weakness, opportunities, and threats analysis of a park. The city park that they chose was the Crayola Park. It was Randall Wicks Park, right there on Fortney Street. And what they did was discover the potentials of the park. They found graffiti on the park. They found a dirty old water fountain. There were some broken fences, some broken chairs that were there that used to have pictures. They also recommended some things that could be done to make the park better. Last year, we were fortunate to do the same study the winters did, the park that Ms. Patrice Bullware was talking about, and those needs are real. And we look forward to partnering with them in any way we can to continue that partnership. So thank you, Patrice, for that. But I want you to see that these kids have ideas. They got great ideas, and they see the fact that our adults are coming to the parks and leaving trash as adults, and our teenagers are saying, "Adults, can you pick up after yourselves?" And so the amazing perspective of responsibility is turning, and we're giving them that authority to present to leadership. So I wanted to congratulate Javier, who was the team captain, Emilio, Anaya, Jason, Lanaya, and Tamiya for their great efforts this year and for all that they did. We're proud of them. We're proud to partner with the DNR and with the city of Saginaw, the state parks and county parks. And finally, wanted to give you a quick update. We were grateful for the $250,000 that we received in programmatic funds, which we will put...we put to work immediately with our weatherization program. With that, we were able to keep our staff working. We were able to get...there's a likelihood of 12 homes that have been done already in the city with weatherization funds coupled with other matched fundings, as well as three jobs that were done for go-backs and quality assurance checks. We went back in to fix the homes that were already done. So we were able to come in and really give the city residents a chance to see what we could do. We look forward to finishing more homes, which we have on the docket. Our team is in homes right now, and we're looking forward to more that we got to do. Even with the demolition, contractors out, and we're getting ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to council remarks.
And tonight, excuse me, we will begin with Councilman Balls.
I don't have a lot to share this evening. I'm just thankful to be here. Thank God for allowing me to be at this meeting today. I guess I can share something. Everybody knows I'm involved in skilled trades and looking forward to teaching kids trades, and just happen to have a couple of neighbor boys that keep coming by my house for air and their tires. And I got them to come in, then after they asked for the air, then they asked for snacks. Then that's when I put them to work. So then I got a little small deck of pine in the backyard with coin fishing in them. I let them feed the fish. They hang around the pine a little bit, and then they come back in, and I said, "Man, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna make a board with a pipe fitting board." So I made a two-by-two board, and I got pipe fittings, and laid them all out on the table. And all of a sudden, they started one scene, and then the next one seen next. You know, I got about six little kids in there, and they screwing pipe, and they put it together, putting in valves and reducing fittings and all that kind of stuff. And one of them put a valve on for the water fountain, so they learn the difference between the three...water fountain and the pipe and stuff like that. So it just tell me that sometimes you can really be creative with kids, and it don't take a lot. I mean, I just had a two-by-two board at the house. I got some pipe fittings, and they came around and said, "You know, we owe their pipe fitting." So I got another board it on. We're gonna put two light switches on it. We're gonna put two light bulbs on it, and a plug on it, and I'm gonna wire that up and have them put in the wires and take them in and take them back out. They only eight, nine, and 10, 12 years old. But when these kids get involved in this stuff, man, they really get into it. You know, I said, "Hey, you can do this here, but please don't go home and do this." I had to put a disclaimer on it in case their parents come back and say they did something like that. So I even put in a plug for the city. When I showed them how the pipes, then I took them out to the road and show them where the 10-inch water main at, where the water that comes in the house, and then I'll show them where the sewer lines at. And I took them down to the basement, showed them where the stuff goes out of the house and stuff like that. So it just takes a little bit of stuff to spark the imagination of a kid, to get them involved. So I just hope that maybe the city of Saginaw could even help out in a small manner by hiring people in our community so that the kids can see their fathers going to work. We need to have that in the city of Saginaw. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Balls. Children do not go home and start messing with water pipes in your house. Next, we have Councilman Ostache.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, that's kind of out of my realm, too. Thanks for everybody coming out tonight in the chamber and joining us, and those watching from home. I want to thank our public speakers for coming out and sharing your thoughts with us tonight. Patrice, thanks for everything you're doing in the city and the projects that you're working on there. I know public engagement is really important when you get out there and put your heart into it. And also, Vicki, thanks again for coming and sharing with us some things. And also to Mr. Coleman. I hear you on Parks, Team Up to Clean Up happened this weekend, and my spouse and I cleaned up Potiff Park. We spent four and a half hours there, and I go back tonight, and I can see what happened in just one day. So it's really important, folks, just please pick up your trash. We're trying to keep the city looking nice. Today also is 9/11, and we are having our council meeting on this historic event. It's a historic day, so remembering all of our first responders and those who lost their lives 12 years ago. Also, I want to congratulate Clerk Bozeman. This is her first meeting tonight with us as city clerk, so congratulations on your new position with the city. Some of the things that have happened over the last, I think, three weeks, because we've been...because of the holiday, we are off one after week. Let the Youth Speak. Congratulations to my colleague, Monique. Councilman did a great job in putting that event, and it was a lot of fun to be there and just listen to the kids, and also to just see them winning the bikes was priceless. So thank you. As I said, we had Team Up to Clean Up this week in the city, and again, that was just a great event. A lot of things went in, so I want to thank all the volunteers that came out to help us for that event. Another thing that happened over the weekend on Saturday after Team Up to Clean Up was the big art showdown under the Court Street Bridge in Saginaw. Old Town, if you did not have an opportunity to partake in the food, the music, the events, the vendors, please go down there and see all of the art that has been created by these artists. It's just absolutely fascinating. As a matter of fact, Director Zimmerman and I were talking about some of the murals in the city right now, and it's almost like Saginaw's becoming a city of murals with things that are going on. By the Dow Event Center, under the Henry Marsh Bridge, there's more muralization that's taken there as well, plus the murals that were put over on the two buildings I just lost. I can't think of the street. Anyways, one of the things I talk about, too, is Adopt a Park, Potiff Park. If anybody's interested, could use somebody just to do the cleaning of the trash that gets dumped there. But also, I was helping my neighbor out last night, and Adopt a Neighbor is another one I can think of. I've got a senior that lives across the street, and sometimes they just have a hard time taking care of their yard, maybe other events are going on. So I've been trimming their yard and taking care of that. And if anybody knows, me and my spouse in our neighborhood, we are constantly cleaning about 10 square blocks. Okay, I'm done. According to the clock.
One minute to spare. Next, we have Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Just want to talk about, this is a big month coming up for Hispanic Heritage Month, and just want to congratulate my church, St. Joe's, for 150 years in celebration this past weekend. Great church. I've been born, raised, and did all my sacraments there, so kudos to St. Joe's off of Sixth Street. Also, this week is a KONFest, and I will be down there with my Medicare information Thursday and Friday. So it'll take place at SVRC Marketplace from Thursday to Sunday. If you get a chance, come out there and get some good Mexican food, some grub. Hopefully, they got the player prices. Come out there, eat, dance, and just kind of experience our culture. It's lovely. I don't think there'll be too many Spanish-speaking people, just the music. But come on out, check that out. And also, just all the events going on, I've been seeing my cousin, she was acknowledged. She was one of the youngest for the murals down there off of Hamilton and Old Town. She did the Virgin Mary and that, so that was really nice. And then my nephew, Anthony Bertie Runden, he did the one close to the new school that's going up. So just a lot of the culture, and it's nice seeing my Latino community coming out and showing that we do have a voice, just like everybody else, and just like the mural projects. I mean, I've been seeing them, loving them, all the art. I wish I could draw, but I can't. But yeah, they're really nice, and I know that they have it on Facebook, and then just constantly sharing a lot of food giveaways going out there. So on my community alerts, I'm always showing everything that's going on in the community. So like they say, we don't have nothing to do, there's always something to do. And I'm like, I feel bad sometimes I can't make it to everything because of my time as well, but I do try to be out there in the community. And I know Ms. Mayor Moore, she's very good at doing that, so I don't know how she does her time, but she's always out and about. So that's awesome that we have our councilmembers, I know, that are out there as well behind the scenes. And sometimes, you know, people were in and out, you know? We're just trying to be out there for you guys, and just like the speakers, you guys bring a lot of knowledge. Like, I go by the Cran Park all the time, really never gone in there, but I see now from the pictures, it looks...it needs a lot of work. And then just before I sign off, Bob Barker passed away. I missed many school days playing sick to be there to watch him. Now, my mom knows the truth, but yeah, so I got to stay home and watch him, but I just want to say, like, Bob Barker signed off. Don't forget, control the pet population. Don't forget to have your pets sprayed or neutered. God bless.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Also echoing what Councilmember Ostache said, welcome Clerk Bozeman. I think Janet was here 11 years, so you'll be here long after I'm gone. So, you know, welcome to your position, and thank you so much for stepping up and taking the appointment. Again, today is 9/11. I also wanted to take some time to remember all of our first responders and also the victims of 9/11. I was in pre-Calc at Newell High School when it happened, so our country has changed quite a bit, and we need to be conscious of that, but everybody should remember those who were lost today. And then also, thank you to Councilmember Lamar Silva for putting on Let the Youth Speak. It was a great event. It was good to see Councilman Ostache there, and thank you to the MAC for helping to put that on as well. It was really informative. Like Councilmember Balls had said, the youth are really just looking for guidance. They're looking for people to help them be educated on anything, spend some time with them, pay attention to them. I have a neighborhood full of kids that are just itching to have any type of interaction, so there's a lot of promise there and opportunity, and hopefully, in the future, we can continue to do what we have been doing, but then build on that. And then last, I just want to kind of continue to keep this in my forefront of my public comments, just for anybody that has any information on those that were killed this year. So Keishon Banks, Kwan Lee, Quay Smithers, Mario Bulger, Cortez Hampton, Mazzy Rudisson, Pamela Whitson, and Ryan Clements. You can call 1-800-422-5245, and that's the Crime Stoppers if you'd like to be anonymous. But I want to continue to talk about that. If we're talking about the youth, all but one of them were under the age of 20. I talked about that at Gospel Fest, and we need to continue to spotlight that so we can get some closure for those families and some justice for them as well. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Not for long, though. Thank you to our public speakers and those who are watching online. Thank you for all those who shared their heart. I'm really enjoying this presentation from our young people on a SWOT analysis. It's amazing that they're starting at this age, knowing, working on that, using those skills. They'll use it for the rest of their lives. I'm also looking forward to the presentation by Dr. Hinton and Dr. Afori Donkwa. When I saw your presentation tonight, it reminded me to wear this. This was made by one of the small business owners in Ghana. And in our conversation, a lot of the conversation was about youth programming and entrepreneurship. And it was an honor to be able to support the entrepreneurs in Ghana. And speaking of entrepreneurs, I want to say congratulations to Yolanda and her team for a job well done for the annual Business Expo. Over 70 vendors from our community were on that street. I gave big city energy because walking down the whole street, there was something going on, every area, music, things for the children. But I want to say congratulations, over 70 vendors there, excellent, excellent job. And I'm looking forward to next year. I don't know how much more you're going to do next year, but I'm looking forward to next year as well. And those are all my notes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so very much. First of all, I'd like to say thank you so very much to all of our speakers, and like the mayor says, surely someone will get back with you. Kudos to CAC. And I thank everyone for coming to council tonight to spend some time with us and hear us and voice your opinion, et cetera, and maybe talk to us after council. But what I want to speak about was the second annual Let the Youth Speak. Awesome. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you to all of our supporters. We combined efforts with the Mexican-American Council. It was awesome. I want to thank CAC, Hamaya, Garber, Family First, Joke Credit Union, Burger King, and Walmart. And if I missed you, I do apologize. And kudos definitely to Vicki and Rachel. I know I get on their nerves, but that's all right. They'll survive me. But what I wanted to say is I took notes, and I will be making a package and giving it to council and other members that are...other persons that are interested. When you hear a 10-year-old speak and say all they want to do is live...I'm sorry. Those young people, I don't think I ever cried at one before, but two of the young people brought tears to my eyes in what they were saying, and they said they want to have a part in what's going on in the city. And several of them got up and said they want to live. And that's...if it don't pull on your heartstrings, I don't know. But you know, for our babies to say that, that's what they want. You know, they ain't talking about continuing education, even though we did that. We had continuing education efforts there, also job readiness, et cetera. So many people were hiring, and they were there. But the main focus was, I want to live. So I think, myself as an elected official, I need to do all I can. Just giving $10 million of ARPA funds to youth, that's a start. That's just a start. But we have to be hands-on. We have to be hands-on, and I'm asking, just like Councilman Balls, and he always talk about the youth and hands-on. Do you know the lives you can save just by taking one, two youth under your wing? And I always say, with love and kindness, have I drawn thee? Because you can't draw young people by being negative to them. They want to see some positive. Thank you so very much. They want to see some positive. Thank you so very much.
Ain't it that real funny? Thank you, Councilwoman Sylvia. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I want to start by thanking our public speakers for coming out. And Brother Coleman, thank you for the update. And for those that have received part of that $10 million that continue to come and give us updates, I really appreciate that because it makes me feel like we did something right. And I would urge those that have not come and given us updates, please do. We need to hear what's going on, what our youth are doing. I also want to acknowledge that yesterday, 9/11, and giving love and prayers to, still to the families that lost on 9/11. I remember I had, I was sitting on the couch with two infant boys and crying, looking at the devastation that was taking place. And it's important for us to remember. It is important for us to remember that time. With that being said, that's all that I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tim Bench. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I did it right. I'm sorry.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and welcome to everyone this evening. Thank you to all of our public speakers. Ms. Harvey, I'm sure that our staff was listening and getting locations to address your concerns. You know, we appreciate that you come forward with specific places because a lot of people complain, you know, there's trash, there's trash. But if we don't know where it is, we can't go pick it up. Or if there's a tree and we don't know about it, we can't do anything about it until you tell us, so thank you. Mr. Coleman, thank you as well. Crayola Park, it's an amazing little park. I'm glad that they selected this one to do their SWAT analysis of. You know, prior to my joining council, so it was over 10 years ago, I was an AmeriCorps Vista volunteer, and we took that on as one of our projects. And it was, as small of a park as it was, it was an undertaking, but it was worthwhile. But like Councilman Ossas says, it doesn't take much time at all for, I mean, paint wears down over time, but people will come in and litter and do things like that. And we really need folks like Ms. Bullware, Ms. Patrice back there, to organize themselves and to pick a park that means something to them and do their best to organize around it. And then people like ourselves have to find ways to support them in their efforts the best we can. But I know that park has been the focus of a few different cleanups over time, so to hear that it needs it again isn't surprising. But it's one of the ongoing struggles that we have when it comes to our amazing parks and the amenities that we hope to offer, is that we have to have sustainable ability. And a lot of the time, the only way we can do that is through partnerships with volunteers. So I would just very much encourage people to reach out to the Public Services Department. If you have a park that means something to you, it doesn't have to be big, but you can adopt it and do some work and see what it would take to take on a Adopt a Park program. And definitely do, that definitely does some good. People have made an impact. I know that there's been talk about Ojibwe Island, and I would love to see people rally around that because there is so much passion for that park. But Ms. Patrice, thank you very much for all the work that you do. You've been doing that work forever, and I appreciate it, and I know it's appreciated by the people in your neighborhood. Excuse me. Other than that, I just want to give a couple of shout-outs. I know other council members have mentioned them, but we did have some really great events. Mayor Moore and her efforts, which I know it's not her event, it's a city event. But all the work that goes into making the Team Up to Cleanup event successful, it's very appreciated. I know I heard from people who were pleased to see volunteers out picking things up. And I just want to give a shout-out to the organizers of the Old Town Art Showdown. Lots of friends doing beautiful murals down there, and there's just so much to see. And I don't know if it was mentioned or not, but there, if you go to the Great Mural Projects Facebook page, you can find a list of all of the electric box murals that have been done. And then there are a bunch that aren't listed there that have been done in the past. So you can take a little tour around town and check them all out, but it's pretty cool. Thank you. This one time.
Good afternoon. Again, let me do this. Let me do some housekeeping. The event we had on Saturday was not the mayor's event. It was the Citizens of Saginaw's event. And I do want to personally thank everyone who came out. We had close to, if not over 100, and for the staff, all of the energy and effort that they put in. You know, I love you. I truly appreciate you. And before anybody asks, no, they didn't get paid. They volunteered and came out. And so, one of the things that I did on Saturday besides that was, I went to the Great Mural, but then I went to St. Joe's 150-year celebration. That says a lot. When I was coming up, St. Joe's was known as the Rainbow Church. It had all denominations, because I used to sneak in there, so that's how I know. What, I think that if we just go back to stop labeling races and just start dealing with people, it doesn't matter if I'm black, if I'm a Latino, if I'm white, let's just deal with the person. Because you'll find out that the people in this city truly have a love for this city, but they're caught in the middle with this tug-of-war that's going on. For my public speakers, I thank you always for coming. Ms. Harvey, trust me, staff was writing as you were talking. I was writing as you were talking, and I'm sure all of your concerns will be addressed. Ms. Bullware, we know that there's some change left, and we may have some more change, shishing. So we just need to work on getting money in the areas that we need to get it. Mr. Coleman, as always, kudos to the young people for working, and I mean, they worked. That was not an undertask, because if you'd have seen, I had probably 50. Maybe not that many, but I had a bunch of young people on Saturday, and they cleaned up. In two hours, we had two truckloads full of trash. And we had elderly people, well, not elderly, the young people, let me say that, the young people. Monique, I heard your program was well-done. I apologize. I had another engagement. However, I was there in prayer.
All right, sweetie.
I'm watching this clock. That's a sin. We watching clocks now. Basically, you know my saying, it's a new season, it's a new day. Look around you, Saginaw. Let's say Saginawers, okay? Just like we say Michiganders, Saginaw is swinging, we're swinging back into motion. Madam Clerk, thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to the reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you. First, we do have the presentation mentioned by Councilman Copeland. So we have a presentation of gifts to the city from Sister City Amankon, Ghana, by some representatives from Saginaw Valley State University. So ask them to come to the podium.
Lovely. Thank you. So, good evening.
Good evening.
Councilmembers and the city of Saginaw. I'm so glad to be here again. What we all know is that in 2018, the city of Saginaw hosted Chief Nana Osim Kwatia II for the Saginaw African Cultural Festival. And at this time, the city gave him the key to the city. Now, I need you guys to know that he was excited about this key to the city, right? So he talked about it a whole lot when we were there. We planned in 2018, in two years, we said, we're going to visit our sister in Amonochrome. That's what we said, and then 2020 hit, and we all know what happened, right? Then we said, no, it's going to be short, it ain't going to be long, we're going to 2021, right? Oh, no, 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 couldn't go to 2021. So every subsequent year, we planned to go to Ghana. And it wasn't until this year, July 6th through the 16th, that we actually had a chance to visit our sister in Amonochrome. And it was amazing, right? Our delegation was comprised of 26 individuals, which included seven youth from First Ward Community Center. It was Jalen, Bria, Indigo, Alasia, Chanel, Mylia, and Sidney. Five people from Saginaw Valley State University, George, Christina, Winter, Matthew, and Amber. We had three people go with us from Canada, and that was Carol, Kevin, and Caitlin. One person from Houston was Jasmine, and then we had 10 people from the city and the community of Saginaw in general. That was Dawn, Joseph, Maurice, Tony, Alex, Brenda, Cindy, Daniel, Shay, and Lula, who we call Gigi. So our goal was to strengthen ties between our communities and to promote cultural exchange and to explore collaborative opportunities, and we did just that. Okay, I think I got it. Yes, we were welcomed at the Derby. When we got there, there was drumming, there was music, you felt it in your bones, right? Our host, it was phenomenal. A Derby is simply this community celebration, which was hosted by Chief Nana Osim Kwatia. Okay, I can do it. That is him. Drumming was going on. He entered the area dancing and celebrating. It was phenomenal. He enjoyed himself, and we enjoyed him. We were also hosted by Queen Mother of Amonochrome, and her name is Nana Monko Aba II. She was on-site to visit, and for those of us who don't know, Queen Mothers in Ghana have roles that vary. But in many cases, they are the keepers of genealogical knowledge, and they also have the veto power of the king. So if the king says, I want to do this, Queen Mother can come in and say, no, we're not doing that. They also play a very significant role in selecting the next chief. Queen Mother got some power, right?
Got some power.
We were also greeted by one of the priests in Amonochrome who poured libations for us in honor of our visit. This is a ceremonial tradition where you honor and give homage to your ancestors. There was a whole lot that was going on. This is just the highlights, right? We, the women of Amonochrome serenaded us with a number of songs. They did a beautiful, beautiful job. And then there was another thing that happened, and I wasn't quite sure what was happening. And George, and, I'm sorry, Councilman Coleman and Dr. Afori Donkwa can attest to this, but there were these folks who were visiting when we were at the Derby. These were Ghanaians who were visiting the chief. And what they did is, they got up, and they were doing these gestures and dancing and movements. And you didn't know precisely what they were doing, but if you paid attention, you can see that they were recognizing the connection between Saginaw and Amonochrome. They kept pointing at us, they kept gesturing towards us, and they would gesture towards the chief, and they would do these kind of, yes, George was there. These communal kind of gestures that indicated this relationship that we had. So it was transformative. It was, it was, I mean, I can't explain it. I feel it right now, right? It was absolutely amazing experience. We were also able to give gifts to the chief. Now, indeed, we bought some things that you spend money to buy, and we wrapped them up and we gave it to them. But we also gave them gifts of spoken words. So two of the young people from First Ward wrote some original pieces, and then they delivered those original pieces to the entire Amonochrome community. What I don't have here, because couldn't find her picture, is Indigo Dudley, who actually, this is Sidney and Bria, who are First Ward delegates. But also, Indigo Dudley sang two songs. She sang the Black National Anthem. And then she also performed another spiritual as a gift. And what you'll see is, your city council was adequately and amazingly represented. Y'all gonna find out amazing is my new best friend, right? I love the word amazing, because that's all I can think of when I'm describing this experience, right? George did a phenomenal job at sharing and reviewing the proclamation that the city gave as a gift, and then also sharing some thoughts about what it is this relationship means to the city of Saginaw. So not only did we do that, but we had fun as well. They taught some folks to dance, so as you come in, they do these dances. And when they dance, every gesture, every move of the head, every move of the hand, every move of the finger, every time your foot comes up or goes down, it symbolically means something. I don't know if George really understood it, but he was saying something, right? So not only was George learning to dance, but we also see Sidney learning and then also Indigo as well. So they pulled us up to the center, and we actually danced with them. And then this is the gift. Absolutely beautiful. It was beautifully wrapped, first of all. So Queen Mother came up, she gave the gift. The chief talked about it, and he said some things. The interesting piece here is that he spoke his words in the language of the people, and then he would translate what he was saying so that we could understand as well. But he gave us this gift, this seal, which means, and I asked Joseph just to clarify for me what it means, and I have it here, and I'll show it to you in a second, but little water to take a bath is what it means. And the meaning is that great things have small beginnings. And it's a symbolic representation of our relationship or the beginning of our relationship with our sister city in Amonochrome. And then we ate, and we ate a whole lot of good food, you guys. So the chief actually hosted us at his palatial home. It was beautiful. Overlooking the city of Amonochrome, along with Queen Mother. Not only us, but also about 50 or 60 other folks who actually fellowshiped with us. We had palm wine, which does have some alcoholic content. It was an interesting flavor. But you know, when you go to the guesthouse and they offer you something, you do what? You graciously accept it. So we accepted it, and we drank the palm wine. So we did that, we did the Sister City piece. It was amazing. It was phenomenal. It was a transformative life experience. And then we also did some other things. When you go to Ghana, there are some things that you absolutely have to do. You can't come back having said, oh, I didn't go there, right? You've traveled 14 hours. So we did some excursions. The first picture you see is a part of our delegation who visited Kakoom National Park. And we went on the Canopy Walk, and the Canopy Walk is this bridge that is hundreds of feet in the air above the top of the canopies of trees, right? Now, the really, really fun part is, you can see everything. I mean, it's a beautiful view, beautiful view. But the bridge wobbles, right? You walk on it, it'll sway a little bit. You walk this way, it'll sway a little bit. So if you don't like heights, this probably would not be the best thing for you. But it was an amazing experience, fun had by all. The other thing that we went to see is the Museum for Dr. W. E. B. Du Bois, who was the first African-American man to get a PhD from Harvard in 1896. He actually left the US and went to Ghana to work with the first democratically-elected president, Nana Kwame Nkrumah, in order to write his book on Pan-Africanism. Unfortunately, Dr. Du Bois passed away before he finished his book. Henry Louis Gates swooped in, and he's finished his work. We also visited the Volta River. The Volta, no, Lake Volta is the largest man-made lake in the entire world. Visited this lake, and on this lake is the Okosombo Dam, which provides electricity not only to Ghana but to Togo and Benin as well. So I had an absolutely fabulous experience there. The one experience that I don't have represented here, because I knew I only had limited time here, was our experience at Cape Coast Castle. And this is the place where we've, where we visited the place where they hailed Africans before they loaded them onto the ships to sell them into slavery, right? Amazingly emotional. It's a very sacred experience. I don't know that pictures could actually capture what we felt there, so I didn't want to try to represent that here. The one thing that I thought was significant for us was the site of what they call the Door of No Return. This is the door that once Africans crossed this threshold, they would never, ever see their homeland again. So not only was it a significant experience to see that, but also there was a door that they had titled, "The Door of Return." And this is the door that we passed through as we came back to visit our ancestral homeland. Phenomenal experience. So we did that. The other thing is, we went to, what I want you to know is that the US, when we have children who lose their parents or they don't have people who can care for them, we have foster care, right? We put them into homes with families. In Ghana, they don't have foster care. They have orphanages. We had the wonderful opportunity to visit with Madam Naomi, who is the lovely woman in blue, and the Royal Seed Orphanage. Absolutely fabulous experience, I'm sorry, amazing experience. We played games with the kids. We hailed babies. And for women, y'all know babies are life, right? You can feel it. You hold them to your chest. As a matter of fact, I have a grandbaby. I don't have any kids, y'all, but I have a grandbaby. His name is KK. And that is KK right there. I'm holding KK. But they ushered us in with dance, right? Dance is so much a part of their culture, right? It's so much a part of who they are. They say, welcome you with dance. So as we're walking in, you can see the young folks dancing in front of us, taught us some dances. Gigi learned some stuff. I got a grandbaby. So amazing. We made a lot of friends, met a lot of new people, made a lot of friends. One of my favorite people on this trip, her name was Blessing. This is her name. It's not an acronym. It is her name. Blessing, she is phenomenal, was the best host ever, and could negotiate for us. She was able to kind of smooth the way for us as we were moving through that space. And then we shopped. And when I say we shopped, we haggled. And for city council members, I would like to encourage you guys to talk with Councilman Copeland, who won our haggling game. We had to go in and haggle, see who could buy a fan for the cheapest price, because they'll tell you 50, but you know if they tell you 50, it's probably worth 10, right? So you have to haggle. And that's just a part of the way that we purchase things, which is very different from the way that we think about. You go into Walmart, the milk is $5, you pay $5. Here, you negotiate for absolutely everything, but bought some beautiful items back and was able to enjoy that experience. We went to church a couple times, church, there's so much I need to tell y'all, but the church experience was phenomenal, we went to a couple of churches, it was like a Broadway production. It, I mean, it was colorful, they were organized, they were, somebody stepped up when they finished, the next person came. It was beautiful, absolutely beautiful experience. And then, we came home, right? And on behalf of every single person that's represented in this image here, I'd like to say a major thank you to all of those who helped us to make this trip possible. I want to say thank you, a very special thank you to Mayor Brenda Moore, who I know was the impetus behind Mayor Browning, the former Mayor Browning, in terms of encouraging him very gently to form this sister city relationship. I'm certainly grateful for that, grateful for Councilman Balls, who has, who was an encourager for us the whole time that we had been planning this. At one point, you know, amongst those four years that we were going, Mayor Balls had, not mayor, you see I didn't spoke something, but Councilman Balls had figured out how he was going to travel with us, and unfortunately, it didn't work this time, next time, we're going to be looking for you, right? Special thanks to Councilman George Copeland, who was a wonderful guide and support for our delegates as we traveled abroad. And none of this would be possible without our financial supporters, the Saginaw Community Foundation, the Forest Youth Advisory Committee, DuPere Corporation, General Motors, UAW, Next Year, YWCA, Tri-City Links, and the Bay City NAACP. All of them gave us money. Now, what I want y'all to know is that the people in Saginaw are, what? Amazing! They are amazing people, and when I tell you that I collected $25 from this person and $5 from this person and $50 over here in order to get our children to this space, our people are so generous and they recognize the, the experience and the impact that that experience would have on our young people. Certainly grateful for them, and they're too numerous to name, we are forever grateful for them. Oh, so, we have gifts. When we went, I didn't bring y'all one of these, but they gave all 26 of us these sashes, and it says, "Aquaba." And "Aquaba" simply means welcome. And these are stools, right? Then, they gave us this seal, right? Little water. Drop of water. Okay.
Mr. Joseph, we didn't hear you.
You can take a bath with just a drop of water, okay? And some kente. And kente tells stories, this story is about community and unity in the community, right? So these are some things that we have on behalf of our sister city in Ammonochrome. What I'd like to request from city council and from the city of Saginaw is that you provide a display case that will allow us to share or to, you know, kind of highlight the experience and the relationship that we're developing with our sister city in Ammonochrome. Now, as I take my seat, I would like to ask Dr. Oforidanqua to offer a few words on behalf of the chief from Ammonochrome, and then George Copeland, I'm sorry, Councilman Copeland, if you can share just a few words as well about your experience.
On behalf of Nana Sim Kwatiya II, the Jasi Hene of the Equapim region, and the Ammonochrome Hene, he asked me to bring salutations to the city of Saginaw and the members of this wonderful city. He wanted me to recall the exceptional gracefulness and graciousness that he experienced when he came to Saginaw 2018. And wanted me to say to you and to everyone in this wonderful, amazing city of Saginaw, that you have a sister city in Ammonochrome, and he's reaching out his hands to every one of us. In the spirit of friendship, of collaboration, and of love. These were the words of Nana Sim Kwatiya II, Ammonochrome Hene, and the Jasi Hene of the Equapim region.
Isn't he so majestic? He's just majestic, I don't know, it's like fossil when I hear, listen to him. But I really am thankful for this opportunity. I think Dr. Hene said one thing, pictures can't truly give you the experience, I mean, when I talk about it now, I get emotional, because I've never traveled somewhere and you felt like you were leaving home to go home and then come back home. There was such a peace and a welcoming everywhere we went. I guess I was a group dancer, I enjoy dancing, so that was a fun thing for me, just going dancing, dancing with all the dancers, and then at one point during the Derby, they were playing American music and some of the subchiefs, so it was more of a relaxed time, but you had during the Derby, everyone is ceremonial, so everyone's looking at you and you want to be on your best behavior, but the chief had not entered yet, and so some music was playing and you just had subchiefs and people from our group, we just came together as one and we danced and had a great time. And one of the things that I took away from the chief during the dancing moment, I have a video on my Facebook page of when he looked at me to confirm our connection. And one of the things that he did that I will never forget, it's embedded in my mind, is he pointed at me and he looked at me and he connected his fingers. And then when he connected his fingers, he pointed up to the sky to say that our friendship and our partnership has now been committed before God. And that was one of the most impactful moments to me. And then I had to acknowledge, and that's what I was doing when she was, when Dr. Hene was talking, during the dances, you acknowledge what they were saying by putting your fingers out. And so while the king was dancing to commit to our partnership and our relationship, that whole time, I acknowledged him that we were committed to that partnership. So I'm looking forward to his return, I'm looking forward to the future partnerships, and I'm looking forward to a greater delegation going to our, so he said he wants to bring a greater delegation to Saginaw, he wants to bring his subchiefs the next time, so that means we have to have 26 times two as well. Fifty-two, all right, that means we have to have around 52 going the next time, just to commit to that future partnership. Thank you Mayor Moore for allowing me this time, and thank you Manager Morales for giving me the sum as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Nana Nissine, Councilman Flores.
Thank you Mayor. How much did you get that fan for?
So, they started off at 50, and then one of my colleagues got it for 12, and then she tried to play in my face about getting it for 12, and all I had was 10 CDs on me. And so what I did was, just like Dr. Hene is fanning, I went into the market and I said, "Auntie, auntie, I'm so hot, I'm hot, I'm hot, auntie, I'm hot, can you help me?" And we went back and forth, back and forth, and then one of the aunties, she said, "Here, here," and when I got my fan, I just turned around and said, "I'm good now." It was, it's cultural, and I, it was really, I didn't realize I enjoyed sales like that. If you enjoy sales, you will enjoy the burning time.
I would like to say, and this is no insult to any of my colleagues, but I believe that Councilman Copeland was the best representative for our city, with his energy and seeing his post on Facebook and that genuine, beautiful smile. I mean, he, I, I'm glad you represented us in Saginaw on this trip, thank you.
Just a quick comment. Yeah, I just have a quick comment. Amazing presentation, I learned a lot. Thank you Councilman Copeland for going. The part of the presentation, when you talked about the Door of No Return, that did get, I got a little emotional up here inside, but overall, this is just fantastic and thank you for everything that you did. Dr. Oforidanqua, I believe I might have had some of your management classes when I was at Saginaw Valley State University. So it's good to see you after all these years again, and just thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the presentation. My heart was with you guys when y'all went, COVID didn't allow me to go, I had my money paid up and took my shots and everything, and then it hit and I haven't had an opportunity to go, but I'm looking forward to it. My heart was with you guys when y'all was going, Copeland sending back messages and stuff like that, and I was like, damn, I wish I was there. Maybe next year. I told my wife, another day, I said, "That's my bucket list," to go, so I'm looking forward to going there too. It happened, thank you.
Dr. Hene, Dr. Joseph, as always, Ammonochrome is a part of Saginaw. Back in 218, I didn't have to work too hard to get him to go along with this. So it was easy for Mayor Browning, it was easy for him to say, "What you think? Yeah, let's do it." So that was an easy ask. I need you to tell your chief, because I know you're going back home, that I miss him and that we truly need, he needs to come, because of a lot of other things, I didn't even want to try to say I was going to go. But on the next trip, if, if, I'm like, I'm like Councilman Balls, if the Lord say so, I'll be there. But I am looking so forward to them coming, because when they came in 218, we had a ball. We had a ball. They met on the steps of City Hall, we greeted them, we went to the Black Arts Festival, and they also came to UofB. Was it another?
They came, a couple years later, they came back.
Right. And so, it's not like they're stranger, and as for your showcase, we talked about that this morning. Yes, we do plan to put it on display in a couple of months or so, or maybe shorter. We're going under some renovation, but our attorney suggested an ideal spot that we may do. But for now, we're going to find somewhere to put it, because we do want everybody to see what Ammonochrome sent to Michigan, to Saginaw, Michigan, okay? So thank you both so much, and thank you, Mr. Manager, because I know they've been trying to get to us ever since they've been back.
Thank you for the presentation, and I think we learned too that we need to get Councilman Copeland in the purchasing office so that he can help us out. We have some informational items left this evening, so if you have not heard or known, Fire Chief Tom Rains is retiring on September 21st, next Thursday. Chief Rains began his employment with the city fire department in 1994 as a firefighter, and he was promoted to Fire Chauffeur Engineer in 1997, Fire Lieutenant in 2006, Fire Captain in 2011, Fire Battalion Chief in 2014, Acting Fire Chief in 2021. Chief Rains earned an Associate of Applied Science degree in fire science from Delta College and served in the United States Coast Guard and Coast Guard Reserve. Throughout his fire department career, Chief Rains has received numerous commendations, including two chief special recognition awards, a distinguished service award, four unit citations, five meritorious service awards. Chief Rains was selected as the Saginaw Fire Department Firefighter of the Year in 2010. Chief Rains has served the city with distinction and has been an excellent fire chief, and we thank him for his nearly 30 years of service. And he doesn't like to be the center of attention, but I like to give him appreciation for all those years of service with the city. So thank you, Chief Rains. It's a long time to be with the fire department. So, starting on the 22nd, we will have an acting fire chief, if any of you have had an opportunity to meet Brandon Hausbeck, he will be the acting fire chief. He is the Training and Safety Officer, and he began his career with the city as a firefighter in 2009, so he's been here 14 years. Brandon was promoted to Lieutenant in 2016, and in 2018, he was appointed the Department Training and Safety Officer, and he serves as the Saginaw County Coordination Team Leader and the Department Grant Coordinator. Brandon has also assisted human resources and recruitment and has organized a fire employment proctoring for the past few years since he was appointed Fire Training Officer. He also attended Delta College, where he received his Associate of Applied Science in Fire Science and received an Associate Degree in Applied Management from Northwood University and serves as an adjunct faculty member at Delta College assisting with the fire science program. He has completed several safety and fire education training programs to enhance his skills with the fire department and is certified as a Fire Officer III, Fire Instructor II, and Certified Fire Inspector and Live Fire Instructor. Throughout his career at the fire department, Brandon received numerous commendations, including the 2014 Firefighter of the Year, the 100 Club of Saginaw County Silver Shalice Award, four unit citations, and two meritorious service commendations. So he will do a great job as well. And as many of you noted, this is Chris Bolzmann's first meeting as our city clerk, and Chris began her career with the city in 2013 when she joined the Fiscal Services Department. She's a Treasury Customer Service Coordinator and later transferred to the Clerk's Office in 2014. Chris has worked in all service areas within the Clerk's Office and was appointed Deputy City Clerk in 2016. As deputy, Chris played a key role in the appointment process for all boards and commissions and maintained the integrity of our elections, working to provide results in a timely manner and improve and upgrade our systems. She has further illustrated her dedication by attending events throughout the year to help educate and register voters. Chris earned her designation of Michigan Professional Municipal Clerk from the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks in 2019. She earned the Certified Municipal Clerk designation through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks in 2021 and is currently working toward her Master Municipal Clerk certification. Additionally, Chris is active in the Saginaw County Area Clerks Association and became a Director on the Executive Board in 2018 and Vice President in 2022 and President in June of this year. So welcome to Chris as well, she'll do a great job as our clerk. And also, congratulations to Ms. Jones and her staff for putting together the Small Business Expo, did a great job, and I'm sure they'll have even better event next year. And finally, when all of you are out talking to people and driving, please, please tell people to be safe when they drive and attentive. I don't think it was in the news, but we did have one of our employees struck, one of our street workers, last week. And fairly seriously injured, but he's going to be okay after some treatment, and I know that has a big impact on our infrastructure workers and across the state, so. I don't know everything that led into it, but we know distracted driving is a very serious issue, so please encourage people to practice safe driving. Madam Mayor, that concludes the management update.
All right, any questions? Madam Clerk.
That takes us to the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve leaving room for exceptions.
To move.
Second.
It's been moved to second, do we have any, do we have any exceptions? Yes.
Two, three, and six.
Two, three, and?
Six.
Do we have any more? All those in favor, 65 by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number two is to approve the introduction of the proposed amendments to the Council Rules of Order of the city of Saginaw.
Okay, from my understanding and from...
From my understanding and from when this was introduced, that it would give council members time to make suggestions, et cetera. And it said six months. And I see it's done before that. But would that be fair to introduce it now and not the six months that was previously given for? The proposals, the proposed amendments?
I believe the work group had a six-month window timeframe. And they completed their work within a few meetings. And then that's why the attorney sent out the amendments back on August sixteenth to give you time to review.
When I asked for these, it wasn't this, it was just notes saying what they were, what they were going to be looking at. And I asked, this is what I asked for, and I could have reviewed before now. And I'm just saying I don't think it's fair. Because if it says six months, if I'm looking through this information and I believe, I believe that it's gonna be six months like it said, that I still had time to say, "Hey, I'd like to see this changed or that changed." I just don't think that's fair to introduce this now as opposed to the six months that was previously stated.
Yes.
Am I allowed to comment without a motion on the floor?
There should be a motion on the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to approve number two.
Excuse me?
What, for reason of discussion?
Okay.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
For dis, no, for discussion.
Just for discussion.
Yes.
And so it's not saying we're going with it, but in order for it to talk.
Okay.
The original motion was to give us up to six months to make sure that with everybody's busy personal schedule and the fact that we were meeting with various staff members, that we had time to complete the work. The intent was never to use the full six months, but if we needed to, we were able to. When the committee was first put together, I sought input as the Chair of the Committee from everyone on council for anything that they'd like to have included, reviewed, questions that they wanted to have answered. We received some input. We factored that input into the recommendations we made. And the city attorney sent out the final recommendations almost a full four weeks ago for the council to review with very minimal input from, I mean, a couple of council members made a few comments, but nothing that would stop us from moving forward or having it on the agenda. And I would just also remind everybody that we're making recommendations to change a document that all of us have been in possession of in its original form since we all got on council. So it's not, it's not a new document. But that's all.
I'd like to say that it wasn't up to six months, it was six months. But I'm just making that notice, do what, do council has the voice to do what they want to do. I'm just saying what I'm saying. I'm saying what I'm saying. If you say six months, do six months. When I asked for information, this information that we have now, I asked for this information. I didn't get it until the other day. So I'm still looking over it. So that's all I have to say about number two.
This document was mailed out to us April?
No. It was emailed to all of city council on, I believe, August sixteenth.
So is everyone reading their emails? Because it was, we actually had the whole document in front of us.
I didn't have the whole document. And I sent an e, I sent an email to the city attorney stating I didn't have it.
You, you had sent me an email indicating you had only received two of the four attachments. And I replied that there were only two attachments to my original email. You received the same email as the rest of council. It was sent as a group email, not individually, so.
However you say it, wanna say it, or however you put it, I'm saying, when I looked at my email, I didn't see it. And that's what I told you. But I'm done. I did not have it. And I was only able to review this a couple of days ago. So I don't think that's fair. So do whatever you want. I didn't have, I didn't have time to look at it. And I, I said, I sent an email saying that I didn't have the other parts of it, I didn't see the attachment. So something happened, I mean, it's a computer. But I'm just saying, that's what I said. And it seems like if I said that, someone would have took the initiative, maybe the city attorney, and sent me that again because I didn't have it.
With all due respect, Councilmember Sylvia, I am looking at your email right now. It says you could only view two attachments. There were only two attachments to the email, so I assumed you had received everything.
Okay, when you, okay, and all due respect, when you said you, when you assumed, you assumed wrong. Because I didn't see it. So, you know, that's that.
Okay. Councilman Flores.
Do what you want to do with it.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, with the process that we went through, we did receive the original rules of order after the motion was made on May twenty-second. I had reached out to the Mayor Pro Tem asking for some clarification. Specifically, I asked what had propagated the construction of the committee. There was some confusion on our emails back and forth. There was no answer to that. I re-asked on June the twentieth and I got no response. I share the sentiments of Councilwoman Amara Stibla about this being, you know, somewhat awkward committee. And the pretense originally was to relearn some things and reassess that they are appropriate and covering all the things that we need to have covered. Those were from Mayor Pro Tem on May twenty-second. And then also that she had on June fifth, some concerns, the way that the council has conducted itself. Under that understanding, I thought that it was just rules of order. Now, there are many different items. I think I have eighteen that I'd like clarification on and questions from. We can do that here, that's fine. My babysitter wants to go home, but so be it. Yet, I think just in, in, overall, the process, the intention, the, the committee, the implementation of at least the proposals was not something that I agree with. So I can just move over to clarification, go section by section unless anybody else has any thing they want to say first.
Yes, Councilman Boss.
I'd like to make a motion to call for the question.
There's a motion on the floor. Call for the vote.
Oh, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
Nay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Sylvia?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bench?
Yes.
Councilmember Astash?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
No.
Councilmember Copeland?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes.
You have seven yes and two no. The motion to call the question carries.
Point of inquiry, where do I send my clarifications to?
You can send them to me and I'll share them with the rest of the work group.
Okay. Point of personal information, I thought that this was something that we were going to discuss before we passed.
There was a motion to call the question.
Yeah, that seems disingenuous. All right, that's all I have.
Mayor, you're gonna take the vote on the?
I'm sorry?
Take the vote on the approved to introduce. So the main motion.
It was, it was most, it was, come on now.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by?
By Mayor Pro Tem and it was seconded by?
Councilmember Copeland.
Councilman Copeland to accept this agenda number two. Calling for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aren't we having any discussion on?
Excuse me?
We called the question. So she has to take the vote.
So I'm calling for the vote?
Yes.
Okay, I thought. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Roll call vote again.
Councilmember Sylvia?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bench?
Yes.
Councilmember Astash?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Nay.
Councilmember Copeland?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes.
You have seven yes and two no that motion carries.
Madam Clerk.
Item number three is to approve the transfer of city-owned properties to the Saginaw County Land Bank for the purchase price of one dollar each. That was Councilmember Sylvia.
Yes. Thank you. And this is more or less like for clarification, understanding. And I read that many people were interested in some of these properties. And what I want to know is a part, if a citizen, a Saginaw citizen or whomever is interested in the property, could, could it be sold to an individual for that dollar as opposed to? And then I, then you didn't answer verbally, but I understand. But if not, can you tell me why?
I believe it's by ordinance or city charter that we have to sell our property at market value. So most individual lots that are listed here would be worth eight hundred to two thousand dollars per property. If we transfer them to another entity such as the land bank, they have a different set of rules for selling their property. And they can sell property for a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars or more based off the property. But for these types of instances, when residents are interested, it's much more affordable for us to transfer them to the land bank and then they can purchase the property from the land bank.
And so the next question would be, is there any other entities besides the land bank that you could transfer those properties to for that one dollar?
I would say no. I wouldn't believe so.
But you don't know?
There isn't another entity though.
There isn't, okay.
There isn't that holds properties that way.
Okay.
Yes, it used to be the DNR did that years ago, but that really went, when land banks started to be formed in counties, that was pretty much transferred to them to do that.
Okay. So then my other question, I think, is the final one on that. If the ord, is there an ordinance that says where you can't, you have to sell at a market value, then that ordinance also can be looked at and changed, am I correct?
Well, it's not just an ordinance. There's disposition of property and there's state law. So we, we have to dispense of city property for the appropriate value if it's still considered to be something that's viable. So if we look at a piece of property and it says it's, it's assessed at ten thousand dollars, then we have to sell it at that or list it for sale, kind of like an auction, and take that auction. Typically, for these types of properties that are basically surrendered for non-payment of taxes, the most individuals who would be interested would be neighbors, which is, makes it much more affordable, as Cassie mentioned, to go through the land bank because they'll sell them for, I think typically silots go for a hundred bucks.
Three hundred.
Is it three hundred?
Three hundred.
I thought it was less than that.
I thought it was a hundred and fifty right now.
It's three hundred.
Okay.
But which one, the empty lot?
For the silots.
For the side lots, they're a hundred and fifty.
Well, they said, okay, I just spoke to them and I just read the paper and they told me that, who is it over there?
Tom Miller, senior?
Yes, he changed it about a year and a half or go to three hundred dollars.
Then he took it back.
All the lots, rather, excuse me.
Right, and he took it back because at one point it was three hundred for a full lot, one, one fifty for a half a lot. So that means that they went back up, but for a long time.
Yeah.
It was a hundred and fifty for a full lot and seventy-five for a half.
Regardless, it's still a lot less than the market value.
Yeah.
As long as you don't, you can't put, you can't put anything on it for five years.
Yeah.
That's their stipulation.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Cassie.
Motion to approve number three?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number six is to approve the three-year contract with Mike's Wrecker Service Incorporated for general vehicle towing, storage, and parts removal services for the police department. That was Councilmember Sylvia.
Okay, thank you. So I just, it was really for a point of information. When, when you, during the contract with Mike's Wrecker, is there any other entities that were looked at as far as maybe also having that contract? And what, what was the pros and cons in regards to Mike's Wrecker getting that contract or?
I can answer that.
Okay.
It was an open bid system. Every wrecker service in this area, all the way down to Flint, Detroit, could have put in for the bid process that they did. In this particular situation, we had two bidders and Mike's Wrecker was the one that won the bid. He had the lowest cost. And he's obviously the only one that's in the city also that bid.
So it's a bid system?
But he was a lower, lower cost than the other bidder.
Okay, thank you so much. Motion to approve, number six.
Second.
Been moved to second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
We are now at board commission and committee reports.
Do we have any board reports? Some board reports. Madam Clerk.
Next, we have appointment of board commission committee members. We have one, it's to approve the council appointment of Stephen Myers to the historic district commission with a term to expire July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to ordinance consideration and adoption. We have one, it's to amend the official city map to vacate the easterly two hundred and forty-six feet of Congress Avenue lying west of and adjacent to the west line of North Niagara Street.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Do you need, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our next item is resolutions. We have one on the agenda. It's to approve the Michigan Department of Transportation Cost Agreement twenty-three dash fifty-three seventeen for the reconstruction of Seventeenth Street from Walnut Street to James Avenue.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and supported. Are any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
We're now at miscellaneous business.
Do we have any motions? Do you need, and I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
If it moved to second, don't y'all move. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Have a good night.